Can reconvene the meeting to open session. We were in executive session since 5:45 to discuss some personnel matters. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
If we could have introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Wendy Sampson.
Christine Beck.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moriarty.
Will O'Beare.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Judy Teal.
First, I would like to thank Hammergrail and Mr. Kay for hosting us this evening. It's always fun to be in Hammergrail.
Yes, it is.
And I'm assuming we have some Pig students in the audience?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. You guys need to stay until nine o'clock or until the meeting is over, whichever comes first. And there are sign-out sheets along the table. You guys should sign out, and if you have a form that needs to be signed, you can see any of the board members that are up here to sign your form. First on the agenda is our approval of the minutes of our last meeting. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the November 6th, 2019, regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Do we have anybody here from the Student Senate? You want to come up to the microphone and just introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name is Erin Motapra.
I'm Elizabeth Baldwin.
Go ahead.
Okay. We've been working on a few things, including making a courtyard in VCHS. We have a few locations in between some of the A, B, and C wings. We haven't come to a final conclusion yet, and we're working with Mr. Domewell and some of the teachers in those hallways and hoping to get funding or using our own to get picnic tables. And we are also planning a holiday drive, just like a regular food drive during the holidays, to help support families.
Student Senate has been diligently approving clubs such as Philosophy Club, which was just approved yesterday, Fashion Club, BC Build It, and clubs such as Table Tennis are currently trying to find funding and room to do their clubs after school. Our Backpack Program is going very well. We meet every Friday, and we are currently trying to look for sponsorships and are in contact with grocers such as Trader Joe's.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody here from the middle school?
Oh, we do. Cool. This is new.
I'm Naomi Tinsman. I'm in the middle school. I'm in eighth grade. Right now, all staff and students can order a free Bethlehem character tee-shirt. So it's a new design. It's the "High School Be The Change" design so that middle schoolers can wear it when they get up to the higher level of school. Sorry. The back of the shirt has one of the 24 strengths. The annual BCMS Turkey Trot is tomorrow after school, so that's not to be confused with the Town Turkey Trot. It's just the middle school one. It's a one-mile course, and staff and students are welcome. We're in the process for Student Council. We're in the process of collecting coats for kids who might not have any warm clothing to wear at home. We'll be organizing a holiday card writing campaign for veterans outside our cafeteria so that students can come up and write a card to a veteran. We're in the process of planning our first seventh and eighth grade social for December 6th. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And do we have any fifth graders from Hammergrail here with us this evening?
Bless you.
Again, thank you for having your meeting here at Hammergrail tonight. And a reminder to everyone, we have our upcoming Hammergrail Craft Fair on Saturday, December 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Again, it's our 36th Annual, so hopefully you'll be able to make it. We have a few fifth graders joining us tonight and are going to tell you a little bit about some of the things that they've been working on this year. We have Manchuun Houston, Marigold Philip, Chloe Sink, Devon Beattie, and Sean Doyle. You ready, Manchuun?
Uh-huh.
All right, get up to the microphone. You've got this.
On October 21st, we went to nature's classroom, and we stayed there for three days and two nights. We did really amazing simulate games. The first one was about the Oregon Trail. It seemed just like the real thing, like it was there. Another really fun game was Predator's Roar's Prey. In that game, half of us would be prey, and the other half would be predators. In the woods, if the predators saw the prey, they would chase that. They targeted that. They would be drawn to the predator's side. After the game, my favorite thing about nature's classroom was sleeping with my friends. Nature's classroom was the best thing this year so far. That's all.
Hi. Hi, my name is Marigold, and one of the things that the fifth graders did this year was the haunted house at the Hammergrail Halloween Party. The fifth graders acted as characters in the haunted house. The theme of the haunted house this year was Camp Hammergrail. Our costumes were the tee-shirts that we're wearing, and we all got face paint. We all had a lot of fun scaring a bunch of kids. My part was with a little fake chainsaw scaring kids. It was really scary, but not too scary for all the kindergarteners. This year's fourth graders, next year's fifth graders voted on the theme they wanted for next year, and one of the themes that people could vote for was haunted Hogwarts. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm going to talk about the Turkey Trot. So the Turkey Trot is on Friday, and Mr. Kay always dresses up as an eagle and goes around hugging kids and high-fiving them. It's really fun, and I think people remember that. So every grade runs a different distance. Kindergarten runs one-fourth of a mile. First, second, and third graders run a half of a mile, and then fourth graders run three-fourths of a mile, and then fifth graders run a full mile. The entry for you to get in is a canned food item or an item of food that won't go bad in the pantry. We donate all this food that we collect to the food pantry for families who need it. All the fifth graders will sort out all the food and bring it to the food pantry. I think the Turkey Trot is really important because we donate a bunch of food to families in need, and if you run, it's healthy for you to run. Yeah.
And what's your name, honey?
Hi, I'm Devon, and I'm here to talk about buddy classrooms. Fifth graders go with kindergarten classes and Miss Cannings class. Some of the things we do are projects, and later on we'll be reading mentors. Two of the things that I have done with my buddy, Max, was a turkey and spookly the square pumpkin, and it's very fun to see them in this hallway and say hi.
Hi, I'm Sean, and every winter, we do a program called Adopt a Snowflake, where there are snowflakes on the board in the main office, and you can go and get them. And each snowflake has a kid on them and a suggested toy or item of clothing for them to have for the holidays. It could be a game or clothing. Last year, we had 225 children that got toys and games. So that way, everybody gets a toy for the holidays.
Those all sound like great things that you guys have been doing. Thank you so much for coming and sharing them with us.
You're welcome.
Would you, could you guys come up here for a second? That's an eagle pen. Nice job. Thank you. Next is our superintendent's report.
I was going to say, I'm not going to be able to. Just a quick construction update, particularly on the library at the high school, which we've been getting somewhat excited about to open. It is still on track. We are planning to have it open for students after the holiday break, so it's coming together as long as there's no last-minute issues. That's the open date. The cafeteria and the kitchen is all running smoothly, and I think they're still, they're planning on hot meals starting in the second week in December still. Auditorium's still on track, and we are starting to do other projects that can be done either after-school hours in the evenings. The bathrooms, I know some of the bathrooms in the high school are being shut down and worked on, those that are in desperate need particularly. And there's some work being done at some of the elementary schools as well, so it's not disruptive to the instruction. So we're good with that. Also, we, there were six of us who went to the ASCD Conference in National Harbor, Maryland a couple weeks ago. It was November 7th through the 10th. The theme was, sounds actually very similar to the school board's conference. It was on resilient schools. There was a lot of sessions on social-emotional curriculum, overall well-being. There were some great keynotes. We all got to divvy up and go to different workshops, and we left on Thursday and came back Sunday, and so it was really a great conference. They always do a good job with it. Also, I'd like to thank all of our staff who participated in the Harlem Wizards game this past weekend. We had probably over 40 staff who either played, if you can call it playing basketball, or volunteering to assist in the event. So it was a really great event, and I know the BCCF does a lot of donations to the district, so their efforts in putting that together is really much appreciated. And today, finally, today is School-Related Professionals Day, so I'd like to thank all of our support staff for their dedication to our students and the district and for everything they do, from when the kids get on the bus until they get off at the end of the day. So thank you for that. And that's my report.
I second that. Definitely, they are all people who deserve a big thank you. I was actually in attendance at the basketball game and commend all of the individuals who participated, and it was definitely a lot of fun to watch. I also had the chance this, just on Monday, to visit the high school in the morning and Slingerlands Elementary School in the afternoon to see what's going on and to check in, and that was a lot of fun. And I had the chance while I was at the high school to sit in on a couple art classes. So I got a little bit of a preview of some of the things we're going to be talking about tonight, but this is more at the elementary level, and it was neat to see what they can do now, especially with the digital art at the high school. It's pretty amazing. We also, since our last meeting, we had a policy committee meeting, and there are a number of policies that we looked at, but the, and one issue that came up that I just wanted to mention that we're going to look into a little bit further was the issue of whether or not we needed to have a policy relating to cellphone use at the elementary, middle, or high school level within the district. And it's been a, more and more of a topic throughout New York and throughout the country, and so we're going to continue doing some research into what some other districts are doing and have done, and also talk to some of the different stakeholders, the administrators, teachers, and to see what some of the feedback would be. Anyone else? You want to go ahead?
This week, or rather, last week, I attended the BOU's Talking With Your Teen. They had about 90 to 100 people there. Really nice attendance, and they had a really good panel, two of our people, but they had Dr. Jennifer Smitkin. And one of the things that she had suggested with regarding to getting our students to have more appropriate sleep times, in other words, if you need five hours, or seven hours, or 10, or whatever it is you need, to run your schedule backwards from your sleep time, rather than starting in the day at whenever you start and ending it whenever you're done with your homework or whatever you have in the evening, to look backwards, say you want to be in bed by 10:30 or 11:00, run your day backwards and schedule it backwards. So I figured I would try it because I wanted to, one, I wanted to see if it would work for me, and, two, I was curious because I also have this habit of staying up later if I have things to do. And what I ended up doing over the last week was setting a bedtime. I would end up waking up more rested earlier. I'd still get the, I'd get the number of hours I wanted, but I would end up getting up earlier than normal. I'd feel better, and I ended up with being able to do some things around the house before I went in for work, which would be the things I'd do late at night when I'm tired. But it has worked a lot better for me, and I'm now thinking, gee, I could become an advocate for this. But it was well-turned-out. I think a lot of the students heard the message, and it was something, if you missed it this year, parents, it's a great program. They run it every year, the BOU does, and it's a really great thing to attend. The other thing, on Monday, I got to visit three classes in the lab school. My kids were in the lab school when they did not have a research class, so I wanted to see what the research class was like. Meg, is it Massey? M-A-S-E?
Yeah, a new English teacher.
Yes. She was running the class, and I was really impressed with how she did it. She got to almost every student, and she had a list of students that wanted consultation with their writing, and then anyone else that wanted it. By the end of the time, she had covered basically the entire class. I was impressed with the fact that they now have free range as to what topics they're going to write on, instead of having to write in a group within a certain topic, and then they have to, a theme, and then they have to pick a topic within that theme. Now they can write to their passion, which apparently, according to Ms. Massey, the kids are really responding to. And there were some fascinating topics that I never would, thought I would hear about in ninth grade, but they really picked it up, and in talking to some of the students, they were passionate to the work. They were very passionate about what they were writing about.
They changed that a while ago, though, Jonathan.
They, I know they changed it a while ago, but I did not experience that, and I wanted to see what it was like.
Gotcha.
She really had a nice handle on it. I then visited Science 10 with Dave Lindrum, and then the Pig Econ Class with Katie Leo. And in that class, they were preparing the presentation that Mark Warfer does with recycling. And I was able to see some of their skits, and they were very creative, and it was a very good experience.
Meredith?
I also attended the Harlem Wizards game. I wanted to say thank you to all the teachers and staff members who helped put that together and who participated in it. It was so much fun for all the kids in the audience, and I loved seeing all the members of our staff work together as a team. It was a lot of fun, so I just wanted to let them know how much I appreciated that. I visited the middle school earlier this week. I saw several classes, and I just wanted to say I was really impressed with everything I saw and the level of engagement with the students in the middle school. And I also just wanted to thank Holly for bringing up the topic of a cellphone use policy. Hopefully, we can have a spirited debate over it and come up with a useful policy that will help all of our educational goals. So thank you.
Just as part of the policy committee, we did talk about cellphone usage and talking about if it were to come to fruition, that we would start out with like a slow, methodical entry into maybe elementary, middle school, and we were just throwing out ideas because of the enormous amount of technology that's flooding schools and focus of the students and making sure it's not overdone and making sure they're able to focus within the classroom in an appropriate way. So that was some of the discussion that we had during the policy meeting, but we were going to look into getting more research, more information on it, and involving more of the board members to talk about it, and teachers, and because I actually was probably the devil's advocate in the meeting, which, you know, I believe in having some sort of cellphone policy, but I was looking at it from everybody's perspective, like teachers and administrators and students, and kind of playing like how it would go down if I were a student or if I were a teacher, and so we had those type of conversations.
Yeah, so it's definitely something we're going to do some more research on, come up with some ideas.
I was able to get to Elsmere Elementary for my school visits this week, and in the 30 years I've lived in this district almost, I have never, I had never been inside the Elsmere Elementary School building, so it was really quite a treat to get a tour of it and learn the history of it and see all of the teachers who went through the, went through the school. I mean, there's a lot of teachers who, you know, graduated from Elsmere in that building, so it was really quite a treat to be introduced to all the little kindergarteners and first graders and second graders who really had no idea really what the school board did. So it was kind of interesting to hear their responses when the, when the principal would ask, what do you think the school board does? And they really didn't quite know, except for the children of school board members who happened to be in some of the classes.
They kind of know.
So they knew. But it was a really fun experience, so that was the highlight of my week, actually.
Sure. Harlem Wizards, awesome, great event. Caper here at Hammergrail two Thursdays ago. Lot of fun, really well organized. I didn't know to bring a blanket, but next time I will. So that was great. And then in following up, we had the discussion on literacy at the last board meeting, and then, so I just got talking to some teachers and some parents, and I said I'd bring a couple things up just because they asked me to, and it seemed reasonable. One was there was a question about having literacy coaches at the K-5 level, whether that was a possibility, just to help some of the classroom teachers. The other piece that, this was, one discussion led to another, led to another, and we got to the middle school, and it was talking about the I-ready piece. And there was a concern that when it comes to I-ready and homework, and this is weird because I am pro-homework, but that the I-ready was, in certain cases, was becoming a massive task at home. They gave an example of like a kid who had special needs, and so if you struggled on the I-ready level, it would kick you back to a lower level, and then if you didn't pass that level, you have to keep working at it until you find the level you would pass, and it could take 45 minutes or an hour to do so. There was one case even where a parent told me that at one point, if it just got long enough, they themselves would do the I-ready assignment for, for the kid. So obviously, it's only half the story, and I, you know, you know, I don't know where the truth lies in that, but those are just two things that were brought to my attention. I just wanted to share them.
Anybody else? Next up is our presentation this evening on art initiatives at the elementary level.
That's you. I'm actually going to talk a lot about the high school and middle school as well.
Great.
You have two documents that you got, so one of them is a much more detailed five-year plan that we have for the art department. And what I'm going to be talking about today is a little bit more of like a program review and what we're working on for this year in our program. And we also have some special guests today that are, they have some gifts for you today as well, so we're going to do that in just a minute. So what I'm going to talk about is our program review and our mission statement. So we've been working for the last year, working on all of these different parts to it. But our mission statement for the Bethlehem School District is that we're incorporating both the visual and media arts. We have a new national standards for both visual and media arts, and you actually had myself and Kathy Buckley were on the writing team for the New York State Art Standards, which went into place in 2019. If you've taken a look at the State Education Department website, they have a framework planned for when the art standards are supposed to be put in place. We're expected to have full implementation for '21, '22, so we're right on track for getting that all in there, and you'll see that in the program review. We'll have that curriculum up and ready to go. But for this year, we're really working on research. We're really looking at, is this the way we want to go? Is this the way we would like our students to be taught in our classrooms? So we're really working on that research piece and looking at different ways that we can incorporate more creative learning into our classes. So one of the things that we looked at was having the students use their own imagination for problem solving, and kind of like what you talked about with the English class that you saw. We really want the students to invest more into their program so that if they have a project that they're working on, you know, I see some of my students in the, in the audience as well, they're really working on their own projects in the class where they come up with their own ideas about what they would like to do. It's a new theory in art education where it's a choice-based program. You'll see this implemented K-12, where we're having the students implement more of their own ideas into their projects. So not only are they deciding, okay, I'd like to use pastels in my project, I'd like to use paint in my project, it makes them more invested in what they're doing in their work. We're also introducing the idea of using contemporary artists in the program, so you'll probably, as you visit some of the art classes, you're not going to see Vincent Van Gogh in every single classroom. We really want the students to see contemporary artists that are working on ideas that are relevant today for them, because art is not about creating workshop-type of things. Just because you can make something just like somebody else does not make it art. We really want the students to be creating their own work of art and to think like artists. That's what creative problem solving is. So this is just a, we, I love this one from Eagle Elementary School. I took this picture from the art show there where, you know, I am kind, helpful, brave, athletic. We really want the students to put their own spin on the work that they're doing in here. So we have the idea of them working on these habits of mind as well. We're thinking about mindfulness in our classrooms, because when we ask the students to do work time on projects, we set the students out and say, okay, you have 30 minutes to work on your artwork. What does that work time look like? What are the habits that a student needs to use in order to be creative? So as you pick up your pencil, what kind of pencil are you picking up? How much pressure are you putting on that pencil? Why didn't you pick a black pencil versus a red pencil? We really want the students to make these, these choices and articulate them as they're working on their projects. So we narrowed down our goals in the art department to five separate goals. So the first one is making sure that our curriculum meets the new New York State standards. I'm going to go over a little bit about what those new standards are, but you're going to see even more of these media arts standards being incorporated into, all the way down to our kindergarten classes where they're starting to do stop-motion animation in those classes. They're really working on those media arts type of projects. And the difference between a media art and visual art is that media arts is really for communication with people. When you think about arts today... When you think about arts today, a lot of it is communication. When you look at your phones and the apps that are on your phones, these are artists that are creating those infographics that you see, the images that you see on your phones. These are artists creating them. So, it's really meant for artwork for communication, visuals, films, things like. So, we have both of those in there. And some of the changes that you're going to see, you're going to see more independence with the students, so they're going to do choice-based art education in their programs. We're going to introduce those contemporary artists. So, many of the artists that you walk around and see in the art classrooms are not necessarily going to be artists that you might recognize. Some of these, the art teachers are using artists they find on Instagram that are just creating artwork today. So, they're thinking like artists. You're not necessarily going to find the art teachers saying, "All right, everybody put the sunflower up in the corner of this paper," and the students are following directions. We're really trying to get the students to make those choices on their own. So, there's four parts to the New York State standards. We have creating, presenting, responding, and connecting. The new one that's very different from our old standards is this idea of presenting. We don't want the students just to create a piece of artwork, stuff it in a portfolio or send it home and put it in a cubby somewhere. We really want the students to be presenting their artwork. Because we're asking the students to talk about their own personal feelings, we want them to be able to write about their artwork. We want them to put it out there for others to see. So, we're using ideas like Flipgrid to have the students talk about their artwork. Our students are putting out, and my students should be doing this right now, is entering artwork into the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Those are due. You guys, make sure you get those done. So, they're entering artwork into more things outside of the classroom. So, when you get done with your artwork, you don't stuff it away and put it away and no one ever sees it. It's got to get out there somewhere. You're going to refine, you're going to reflect. Those are job skills you're going to need, you know, as you go on to college and career readiness. You really got to get to the point where you're reflecting on things. So, we want them to respond to artwork, to present the artwork. And this is an example from the elementary school. Ms. Gwendolyn Kavatchik is a K-5 teacher at Glenmont Elementary School and she also teaches two classes at Elsmere Elementary School. So, the students are doing things like responding. So, they're using contemporary artists. They're using to discuss the topics and materials that are relevant to today. They're presenting their artworks, so they're writing about their artwork, they're putting up displays of the artwork. And this one here is actually a community project that they did over at Glenmont where she did whole rainbow from purple all the way to red all the way across there. So, the students are encouraged to generate their own artistic ideas, to develop their ideas, to refine them, and to organize their own ideas. And finally, the other part of this is connecting. We're going to see in our other goals too, we're really trying to connect with our community a little bit more. So, the synthesis of their ideas is relating that to their own experience. So, when we talk about when they make their art pieces, we want the students to be able to synthesize the knowledge that they're using. So, we want them to be able to answer the question, "Well, why am I making this? Like, what's the point of this?" So that when they're walking around to their art teacher, they're not asking their teacher, "Is this right? Is this right?" Walking around asking them, or, "Am I done?" We really want the students to feel like they cannot bring their own experiences to things. So, with the connecting part of that, here's just an example, a color version of that display that you see there. So, we're really trying to give those students much more voice in what they're doing and giving the students more choice in their projects. So, goal number two is we're providing teachers with more professional development in these areas as well. I'm one of the turnkey trainers for the New York State Standards for the Arts, so we've been doing turnkey training on the art standards in the art program. And now, we need a little bit more professional development to dig into these different parts. So, one of the things that we're working on is the Art of Education. It's an online program that teachers have access to. They have over 180 hours of CTE credit that's available to them that they can take advantage of. And the focus of these are going to be on our topics that we're working on. So, these are just a few examples of some of the, the teachers could be doing this right now, doing their CTE credits on their own time, which is what's, what's helpful for teachers. So, they're working on behavior management at the elementary school. There's a lot on habits of mind with social emotional learning because if I'm going to ask these students to talk about their personal feelings, they better feel pretty comfortable coming into my room and feeling like this is a community that's not going to laugh at something that they're creating or feel like they can't be, can't be themselves there. So, we're really working on that social emotional part as well, working with advanced students. So, that's a little bit about what we're doing with our professional development, is putting in that art of education for our students. Goal number three is we're providing the opportunity for community and career connections for their art endeavors. We want the students to understand how many different art, community opportunities there are and how many career opportunities there are. When I go and look at different colleges, there are so many more degree programs than there were 10 years ago for these students, from different parts of communication to film production to graphic design to UX design. There's just so many more than there ever have been before. So, we want to make sure that students understand what those, what those things are for them. So, some of the things that we're doing, there was a program, the Bethlehem Artist Association has put in student memberships for our students. Actually, I think a few of them are members now. Students can actually go and watch professional artists over at the Bethlehem Public Library do demonstrations on different products that they're using. They came in last week and presented to our students in our advanced art classes. And we're also reaching out to our community a little bit more to find places where we can put artwork out there. And that's part of that, that connection part of it and that presentation, you know, your artwork's not just going to get tucked away or filed away in your Google Drive somewhere. Let's get it out there somewhere. Let's find a way for you to show off what you're doing. So, this is Maggie Bailey was the, and her artwork went all over the Capital Region. Maggie, and she's determined to win this year too. So, she's was the, she had the poster for the Festival of Young Artists, which is in June. It's a great place to see music, art, theater, poetry. The students actually wrote poems based on the artwork and then they had dancers do interpretive dance based on the paintings. So, it's a really nice way to put all those things together. And students in National Art Honor Society, they were working on these, they worked on the Bethlehem Farmer's Market signs here. They're getting out there, they're, they're offering up their services as an artist to different parts of our community. And this year, we have a record number of students in National Art Honor Society. We have 68 students that are out there. They, they filmed the Talking With Your Teens for us, so they're doing editing and doing these things out in the community to show off their skills. So, we're really trying to connect a little bit more with our own community and also with the Alliance of the Creative Economy. The Alliance of the Creative Economy is a Capital Region group. They are professional artists that are, that they do monthly programs for artists. So, our students can go to them, we can go to them, and it's going to different businesses around the community where we can go and see what kind of job skills they're looking for from our students. So, it's been a real fun project to, to work on is being part of that alliance. So, we're working on those two things now. And goal number four is we're working on the habits of mind. These are, what does an artist think like? So, when I say we're teaching the students to think like artists, we're teaching them how to problem solve, how to pick out what materials they're using with a project, how to refine things, and how to make a mistake and how to rebuild from that mistake. So, we're looking at these habits of mind in the classroom to increase the students' ability to engage and concentrate in what they're doing in the program. You know, our class can sometimes be, when you have 20 minutes of work time, sometimes there's a lot of talking that goes on, a lot of distraction. And when you have 30 kids in a classroom, it's difficult to create an environment where you can concentrate on something and to work through a problem. So, we really want to get to the point where we're using some of these habits of mind in our classroom and mindfulness in our programs so that we can provide that, that learning environment for the students to be able to be creative and think like artists. So, that's one of the other things that we're really working on. And these are, the habits of mind are across different fields as well. You'll see these in areas of math, science, engineering, and we're using the ones for artists in the art program. We're also working on, this envision is one of those habits of mind that we're looking at. So, envision is, can I picture the next steps in my artwork? When you sit down in front of a painting that you've been struggling with, can you envision what those next steps are going to be? You know, as we're creating more independent opportunities for the student, you have 30 kids that are doing 30 different things in the classroom. We want to teach these kids to be independent and envision, "What is it that I'm going to do next in my project?" So, that's just one of them. And then, number five is we're going to develop a curriculum K-5 to address the fine motor skill development in art as well. So, we want them to think like artists, but we also need to teach them to use their hands like an artist as well. Art is a craft, just like in music, you need to practice. You need to practice drawing in order to get better at it. You're not going to get any better at it by not picking up a pencil. So, one of the things that we're going to be working at is working with our occupational therapists. We started this, this summer, we started one curriculum project. We're working one-on-one with the occupational therapist and the art teacher in the classroom to address the needs of some of our students because we're finding that students just are not coming to kindergarten, being able to cut things. We're noticing that handwriting has gotten a lot less refined. So, we would like to see, we're seeing that in the art program too. So, as we're asking students to draw what they see, they're not able to connect their hands with their eyes. So, we want to work more with those fine motor skills at the elementary school and at the middle school and high school as well. Because we started this, we were like, "We really like to do this just at the elementary school." And then, the high school teachers started chiming in like, "No, we need this for our ninth graders too." They really need to get to the point where they're connecting what they're doing with their hands. So, we want to find that balance between being able to do things on the computer where they're doing graphic design work, but the graphic design, somebody drew that first, they scanned them in. You're drawing with pens on these tablets or the computers you're working with. So, we want to keep refining these motor skills with our students. So, that's, that's the fifth goal that we have. So, we've decided on these five goals. And again, this year, our main goal is to do some research, is, "All right, well, we like this idea of these habits of mind. What do they look like? What resources are out there for us? Let's get in and we'll do some professional development on these things. What do the New York State standards tell us and how can we use them in our classrooms? And what are we already doing in our classrooms?" So, that's really our research for this first year, is we're doing a little bit more training in the standards of art. And again, it's kind of nice because we have local resources for this and we have '21, '22 to have full implementation of those New York State standards. We've already purchased the Art of Education Pro for our teachers, so they've been jumping in and starting to take classes already. We're attending the Alliance of the Creative Economy and the Bethlehem Art Association has already come in and done presentations for our students and offered up some great opportunities for them. And this is the next thing we're working on now, is those habits of mind in the classroom. What does mindfulness look like in our classrooms so that we can create an environment for our students to feel comfortable and safe and think like an artist in there? And then, finally, we're going to start working on our OT, with our OT faculty and looking at what kinds of things can we do to help the motor skills of our students? That's what we're working on for our five-year plan. And I gave you a very detailed list in your, in your agenda. If you'd like to take a look at more of the specifics as to what questions we're looking to answer with our five-year program plan. And we also have some student artists here who are taking part in our programs. And we've created some gifts for you. I'll do that first if that's okay. Do you have, you want to do questions first?
Sure. You can finish with the...
I have some students here today. These students were in Mr. Regiro's eighth grade art class last year, so we took these from the summer show. These are printmakers, so I know as printmakers, you were thinking like artists. They had to think about, "What does the perfect print look like? How much ink do I need to put on it? What does it sound like when I put the ink onto those papers?" So, we have Malia, and some, I did have some regrets for tonight, but we'll call up everybody. And Madison McGinnis. And Jas Lawson. Chloe Webb. And Mason Mauer. Madeline Mitchell. Nina Paleya. And these are all images that they did of the middle school. And so, these were ones they did over the summer. And I have these for you. And we also have some gifts for our Board of Education as well. Thank you for your service.
Thanks very much.
You get two, two of each of them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Did you have any questions for me? These are just some really great examples of how they're working with the materials that they're working on, you know, using those fine motor skills, doing observational drawing in their work as well.
Thank, I was just going to say, thank you for the, for the cards. They're great. I know the, they definitely get used in my house.
Thank you for your service. This is, you know, part of your, the national recognition for all the service that you do as well. We know this is, you know, it's a difficult job to do and it takes a lot of hours, so we really appreciate all the hours that you do put into your work in the school board.
I just wanted to say that when I was at the high school and I went, one of the art rooms that I went into, I got a chance to see the, sort of at the high school level, the sculpture class, the idea of this sort of choice-based art. And they were all making a, working on a sculpture, but they were all completely different from each other. And even some of the materials were different. And it was really neat to see the creativity and, and so much, looked like so much more fun than the art that I remember from when I was in high school.
Yeah, it's definitely a different way of thinking too. You know, we really, you're not going to see doors on a lot of the cabinets, like when you go into the art room, it looks a little messier because you've got, all the cabinets are open, but when a child needs to go, say, "I'd like to use yarn." They can see where the yarn is. They go and take the yarn, they try something out, see how that works, or they go grab a pencil from here. So, we tried it, we designed two new art rooms last year and we did that with this open concept in mind because we knew this choice-based was coming. We want the students to be more responsible for their own materials in the classroom as well. So, it's not this locked cabinet where only the teacher knows what's inside of there. The kids know what's inside. I still have a couple of special cabinets, but for the most part, the kids know where all those interiors are.
Every time I end up bringing cards home, my wife and I argue over who gets to use them. So, her question to me last time was, "Can you buy some of these?" So, do you ever, are these ever duplicated and sold at the school short?
We certainly could. We have never sold them, no.
Well, let me know if you do.
I will. Yeah, they're, they're, they're very easy to reproduce.
This is a wonderful program. Are you going to be exhibiting as you did last year at the Empire State Plaza?
Yes, we're going to be doing the Empire State Plaza show. One of the things that you noticed that we did not do this year was that New York State School Boards Association show. We opted for the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards this year. We really have some very talented students who go on to two, three years of art. So, we really felt we wanted to get them more of a national recognition this year. So, we focused our efforts and our funding on that program instead of the School Boards Association where students don't necessarily get to go to those programs. But with the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, those students, they don't get to see their artwork on a display, but it opens up a lot of doors for scholarships for those students that apply for those. So, we opted for that this year instead.
Well, good luck with that.
Two questions. One actually is right off of what Jonathan was saying. Last year, we heard from the tech department and they have all these cool kinds of printers and whatnot, and it would be neat if the art department could work with the tech department and reproduce some of these things. It's absolutely like, I mean, I know that, you know, I would, you know, these are, these are great cards, you know? People would buy them. They're, they're, you know, buy student artists, you know, really neat thing.
It is.
The other thing was, when it comes to the, having choice, how do you prevent a kid from just going back to the same medium over and over again? Because that'd be my, it's my only concern with choice is sometimes when you, when you give a kid choice, they don't get exposed to all the different options. They, they find one, they love it, but then there was something else that they might have loved more, but they didn't try it or weren't exposed to it.
Well, there's a couple of ways. Like, as I said, we're doing a lot of research in this now. Our elementary schools, they've thought, talked about this and one of the things, kind of like your, your boards behind you there, they want to actually have T-shirts and aprons for the kids. So, all right, this week is going to be the week that you try out, all right, you get collage, drawing, painting, and they have different color smocks for them. And so, the next week, all right, you got to pick a different color smock, you got to go to the drawing one, especially at the elementary school where we really want them to get out and explore a little bit more in our seventh and eighth graders. For our upper-level students, we actually want them to dive a little bit deeper into one medium and to really explore that deeper and deeper and deeper. But we do give them the idea of doing bootcamps with the classes as well, and that's, that's what I call them in my class. So, what we do is we do bootcamps with the students. So, every week, we get the chance to try out new mediums. It's like, all right, for the first five minutes of class, everybody's going to try today, actually, all my students in my class tried out screen printing today. That was the first 10 minutes of class. We learned a new medium. The kids that wanted to try it, tried it, but at least everybody got exposure into that medium.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted, what an inspiring presentation this was. It was, for me, I don't know, there was something about it that just really moved me, that we have such an opportunity in the art program to develop students and how it's probably been under-recognized for so long. Like, when I was growing up, we wouldn't even think about choices or the locked cabinets or you just went in and you had your little project. And I don't have a creative bone in my body, so this is really nice to hear. What I really like is that the students, the presenting portion where they can talk about why they thought of certain ideas, because when you go to a display, whether it's at NISBA or in the hallway, you're always sitting there wondering, why did they pick this choice? And so to be able to write something about it incorporates English and how many academic opportunities with the fine motor skills and it being a safe area for, for kids to express themselves and a way for the school to really develop that area for kids to be safe and feel that they can express so they can carry it on in other areas. I just think there's so many opportunities in art that maybe we didn't have as, as children that going forward, there's going to be just a lot of opportunity. It was really nice and nice to see. So thank you.
I just wanted to say, I really do appreciate the fact that you're concentrating on the, the fine motor skills and incorporating OTs into that. I know we've heard from a lot of kindergarten teachers and, and the younger grades that our children are coming in with, with less muscles in their hands, and we really need to work on tactile work with them and increasing those skills. And that's why I was a little confused because, and maybe I misunderstood, that I thought you said like, kindergartners were doing stop-motion animation? But are, aren't we concentrating on the, the fine motor skills and the tactile skills? So how?
What's nice about stop-motion is the students are using modeling clay for this. So when they're using that modeling clay, they have to actually, like, they got to, it doesn't just move, they've got to warm this up with their hands, they're using that to create these, and that's what's nice about stop-motion animation, is they're actually using their hands to move, take a picture, move, but they've still got that mobility factor using technology. Holly actually got to see this the other day. In the sculpture class, we have a brand-new laser cutter in the classroom. The teacher went back and forth, he showed them how to do it with a, an X-acto knife for detailed work that you might not want to reproduce several times, but then also showed them how you could use a laser cutter to create that same, that same technique if you were using. So with the stop-motion animation, we really wanted to use their hands to be able to do that.
Great, thank you for clarifying that, because I was just envisioning just a bunch of kindergartners on the computer the entire time. And I was wondering how that worked, but now I.
Between the two things. Because technology is, you know, better with a computer than you can with your hands. But you really need that hands-on balance between the two things.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this point, the board recognizes any visitors who would like to speak on an agenda item. Not seeing anyone. Moving on to number six action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through two. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through eight. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through eight. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item seven, recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to come up and speak on a non-agenda item, now is the time. Item eight, future meetings and events. Our next board meeting is on Wednesday, December 4th, at the high school in the cafeteria. With the regular board meeting starting at seven, anticipating an executive session starting at six. And the meeting after that is on Wednesday, December 18th, also in the high school cafeteria. Regular board meeting starting at seven, anticipating an executive session starting at six. And the first meeting of the new year is on Wednesday, January 8th, at 7:00 PM.